Call our meeting to order at seven oh four. Yeah.
This Ally, sorry.
Ally is on the call, so I will do roll call and then we'll take the vote after the pledge.
Yes.
Okay. Um, so I'll do roll call trustee church.
Here.
Thanks Jenny trustee. Jardine.
Here.
I always, I always struggle like I know how it's spelled. Trustee Graziano.
Here.
Trustee Shaw here and director Grassi. Also present, we have Jill from the library, Eliza and Martha. Okay, great. We'll say the pledge.
Yes, I invite you to join us in the pledge legion.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
All right. Um, I bring this to item for additions and corrections to the agenda. So the first thing we'll do in that little section is um, we have a physical forum present for our board meeting so we can continue. We also have trustee Friedman online. She woke up not feeling well today. Talking with Sandy. So many people are sick. So thank you, Ally, for staying home. Appreciate that. I'm hoping to need to put vote to permit um trustee Friedman to join our meeting. So all those in fo- all those in favor of um having Ally Freedom and join us, please say aye.
Aye.
Nays, any nays? Or stay. Okay, Ally, you are live.
Thank you.
Can you hear us okay?
Yeah, I can hear you fine. Can you hear me?
This is fine.
Speakers.
Okay, we're adjusting our speakers, Ally, if you can hear me.
I can hear you just fine. Can you hear me okay?
Hey, still adjusting the speakers here, Ally. Oh, we see a green light has come on.
Can you hear me okay?
Okay, try again.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
I can hear you just fine.
Oh, good. That's better. We have prevailed.
Thank you.
IT challenge of this um somewhat antiquated room. All right, cool. So very excited today because we have a member from the public to address the board um and like the Park District, we have a five minute limit um and we're really excited that you're here today um to to tell us, give us some feedback. So if you would please state your name and if you wouldn't mind if come over here. What do you, what do you want to do today?
So the microphone is over here, the video camera is over here. If you're comfortable, um that's fine. If not, that's okay too.
We can move, what if we move the microphone toward Jenny?
Yeah.
So that it's quicker to where um our guest. Is sitting.
This good?
It's like an all time radio show. V on V. So you know the drill.
Yep, my name is Emily Lane and I've been a resident here in Lake Left for eighteen years. Um, I also want to just say that I wrote that letter. I didn't mean it for it to be anonymous. So that's why. Yeah, so that letter about the two Northwestern sons and the daughter who's in high school that's me. Um, so. Thank you. They're done this year. So I just want to um just begin again in regards to the pilot hours. Um, I truly believe the library is a service to the village residents. And it should be open when most residents can eat a lot of stuff. A lot of village residents work or have school from nine to five, so it is not a good option to cut evening or weekend hours. So I would urge the board to reevaluate their decision on the pilot program. Again, I wrote that letter um just to share my feelings of how we use it. Again, my husband works and travels during the week. He can only use it on the weekends really. And he does his work here in my my um we've used the library our whole lives from the preschool story time to it's one of my lifesavers is book clubs. I love, I've been in book clubs throughout my my whole eighteen years here and I love it and that's how I connect with people. Um, and so to cut evening hours and the weekend is just really hardening because that's when again, most people uh like the students and the workers use it. So I really do urge you to reevaluate that decision by the board. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your service.
We appreciate you taking, you know, believing your personal kind of family come here today. It really underscores the um, I think emphasizes your comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Do we have any other members of the public on Zoom? Who wish to speak?
Beyond the ones that were mentioned by, I think so. Or no, we don't.
We don't, okay.
That's okay.
All right. Um.
Did we confirm that?
We did not. Can you confirm with Ally?
Oh, thank you. Ally, are you able to take notes?
I am. Yep, we're all set.
Okay, thank you. Okay, good. All right. Um, that takes us to the approval of board meeting minutes. We have the minutes from November fourteenth. Our regular board meeting. So I'd be looking for a motion to approve or edit. Thank you trustee.
I have a second.
I'm second.
Trustee George with the second. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Um, can I ask a quick question? And this is maybe OMA. Um, Sandy, were you at last month's board meeting?
Yes.
No, you can't there.
Yeah.
Wasn't there?
I will. You made my first step.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve the first from trustee church.
Second.
Second trustee Graziano, all those in favor? Aye. All those against abstained? Abstained, so he was abstainer. Yeah, so Sandy had abstained. Thank you, Ally.
Thank you.
All right, that takes us to the library director update.
Great. Well, thank you very much. Um, one of the uh highlights as library director is to plan and present staff day. And I had um a fantastic opportunity to work with a great group of people in the library to plan this year's staff day, my first here at the Lake Left Library. And um what it was open to every staff member, all staff. We closed the library to dedicate a full day of learning. We invited JJ's List. JJ's List is an organization that works with employers and businesses to provide disability awareness training, to make libraries more welcoming and inclusive um in their customer service and in their role. They're based at Evanston. Um, I've worked with them at Deerfield Public Library, Glencoe, and they provide disability awareness training to a number of libraries um in Illinois. Um, but what makes them unique is that the training is presented by people with disabilities. Um, because uh if it's not for, if it's um, what is the phrase from the sixties? Uh, nothing without us, uh, nothing for us without us or something like that. Um, and I think that it was a great opportunity for um staff without any experience or with little experience to um interact with people with disabilities. Um, various disabilities were represented. Staff um including Eliza and Martha got a chance to practice different scenarios in a very welcoming, non judgmental environment. Um, they created a really great space for staff to ask questions and to learn without the fear of making a mistake because we are all learning on how to be inclusive and welcoming to everybody. Um, and so uh this was a great um day. Staff had lunch and breakfast items. Um, we also had a presentation about um winter reading program, which is already uh upon us. If you haven't signed up for winter reading, it is open for all ages, adults, uh teens and kids. Encourage you to come to the library for that. Um, and then I also presented an in-depth presentation about um our salary benchmarking project. I talked about um what salary benchmarking is and why it's of value to organization. I talked about um the goal of this benchmarking project, which is to create a salary scale, which our library has never done before. I discussed um, you know, the value of having an expectation as an employee um to know what the range for your job is and how this information not only supports them here at this organization, but if ha- if they happen to move on to another organization, they have this knowledge to take with them um about expectations for salary. Um, and so it was a great discussion, a great opportunity to learn about how things have been done before and how things will be going going forward. Um, so staff day was a huge success. Um, and I just want to acknowledge the managers who helped with various activities throughout the day. Um, this month was actually a really big training month. We've had several staff find capacity to take and dedicate time to taking training, um including our adult librarian, um taking a class about collection development. You might remember that earlier this year, it seems like so long ago, we had a member of the public ask questions about a particular book in our adult nonfiction collection. I mean, I think this was before this um election of our new trustees. Um, but this particular uh course was about the danger of a single story um and the importance of inclusion and providing a variety of perspectives in um diverse collections. Um, I'll also say that in terms of staffing, yes, um we have continued to uh um maintain a um FMLA uh not on staff right now. So um at the same time though, even though there were staff with illness, we've only canceled one program last month, which compared to the numbers of the previous months, that is significantly lower. Um, so that is a big change. We also may just not have planned as many programs compared to other months, but um I am pleased with that and I want to acknowledge um Eliza Jarvey, who is taking on the role of um overseeing all library programming right now while the adult programming librarian is um away on leave. And so um this means covering anything from room setup to making sure the vendors get paid to promotion um and talking to staff to making sure everything um gets planned for the day, um taking statistics and making sure they're recorded and a lot of other things I don't have time to talk about. So um, thank you to Eliza for taking on that big, big responsibility for us during the sit room. Um, last thing I'll just say is that uh you are all welcome and the public is welcome to um participate in what is called um what is called, um it is called, oh shoot, what's the name, what's the name? Number six, the program. Shoot, I lost it. The um program with the brewery um totally booked. Um, there is a fundraiser happening at the Lake Left Brewery right now. Um, they have brewed a a large amount of a pumpkin spice beer and every um pint and growler that is sold, a portion of those proceeds go to the library directly to benefit us. So um, I wanted to share that information publicly and with all the trustees and invite you to the Lake Left Brewery if you are so um encouraged or um interested in imbibing of such a beer. Um, this month was again, another very busy month. Um, I I do want to highlight that Martha um is back full time and has been accomplishing a very many amount of technology projects for us, things that have been on hold and things that are quite overdue, and it is helping streamline our work processes and um actually making it uh easier for staff to do their jobs. Um, so I just want to acknowledge Martha in that way. Um, and a lot of time this month has been spent uh finalizing the Amber Anderson report um which will be presented tomorrow at the building and grounds committee meeting, um the site evaluation and accessibility report. So I've been working with Sean um on various iterations of that and the final report and presentation will be given tomorrow. And then the full presentation will be given to the, or the presentation will be given to the full board in January or February. We haven't finalized that. Happy to answer any questions about the director's report as it stands. Thank you.
Hearing no questions, you want to move um through the monthly statistics report tonight?
Yeah, so I kind of, sometimes I focus on it, um sometimes I don't. Uh, and this particular month, November tends to be a slower month in terms of building visits. One thing I want to highlight is my work, look on my workflow has increased incredibly um and reduced time based on the fact that we now have an um automatic um software program that tabulates all the people that walk into the building. I just had to sign in and get a number and type it into this report. And that probably saved about a half hour of work um staff time in propping for this report. So um every little bit counts as we are evaluating very strategically our workload and our processes in every aspect of our um our job. And so uh you'll see that some of the numbers are are down, um but that is pretty typical when you look at trends across the three years. November visits tend to be down compared to October. Um, but I am pleased to see, you know, just continued um use of our um eBooks as we uh promote those and we actually did rarely need promoting, um but we continue to see great usage of those. Yeah, so for example, you'll see a lot of our databases see a downturn in use in November. Um, and you can kind of see that is the case, at least with some of the months too.
Right.
Um, question, can you just remind me the difference between the passive program and active program?
Yes, and I'd love to invite Eliza to answer that question.
Um, I will give the first my point.
Sure.
Uh, okay, uh, an active program is any program that is staffed actively by a staff member. So for example, if there's between crafts between four and five p.m. on a Thursday, that would be an active program. Whereas I'm concerned with new services, trucks, some. Whereas grabbing the press, which we passively have available for you to grab and then take home, that would be a passive program. So they tend to be um over longer spans of time and require inactive staff day.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Yep.
In fact, we transitioned one of our adult programs from an active program to a passive this fall because we didn't have the staff to lead it, but we had already purchased the supplies and one of our staff members, Lizzie, helped create those as kits. And then the people that registered for the program so was able to participate with the program and activities using directions and supplies and the kits that were created. Um, so it's uh, it's also really uh supportive of people's different times of wanting to use the library. Um, we have a lot of caregivers who come into the library specifically going towards those kits. Um, those passive programs. So um it especially as people, different people use the library in different ways and provides opportunities for engagement.
Good question. All right, thank you. Um, that takes us to committee reports. Um, we have four committees that met this week. Let's start with the HR committee trustee Graziano.
Oh.
Met in November?
Um.
I'm sorry, yeah, November.
We just met in December.
We just met in December.
That okay, December eight?
Yes. It's any time between the board meetings.
Okay. Um, yes, so we met to discuss, it's our leader and we just did uh the sixth month um director. It feels like we just wrapped that up, but we're starting to plan for uh for the year, year per annual evaluation. So uh the HR committee met to create a calendar and um set some dates for when we will be sending out surveys, um when we will be um touching base with the board and the staff in order to gather information. Uh, and so we will be finalizing that calendar and some other processes in the next few months and we will share that with the board once we have.
And then the staff.
Oh, sorry. And yes, but we also thank you to Bonnie for following up today uh by sending out an email to inform everyone about uh how we are going to be running the staff appreciation luncheon on January fifth. So I think she included a lot of the details about we would love to have help from anyone that's available. I know that a few people have already offered to help with that, so we really look forward to.
Thank you to everyone who's raised their hand for different assignments on the fifth and many who have also already made um uh some contributions. So it's awesome. We're rolling. Thanks Jenny.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Jenny? And then Ally, if you have anything, if you want to raise your hand on this Zoom and then Martha can let us know because I can't see the computer screen. Awesome. Um, finance committee. So I will report out for the finance committee work and ask Renee to help if I forgot anything. So we've met and we've gone through the first draft of the detailed line by line budget for next fiscal year. Um, we will do that again at our next meeting, which is this Thursday. Uh, and that's about all.
I did have a working meeting with Bill as our treasurer and chair of the finance committee to work on the second draft of the budget, which will be presented on Thursday.
Yeah, and then just to further the thread on that, the budget will come to the board meeting in January. So we'll review kind of key changes from previous year. We won't go line by line, trust me. Or if we do, bring coffee.
No.
So you'll see some of the output from the finance committee in January.
Oh, I'll add that the finance committee did see a draft of a part of the audit report. Um, and for those of you that are here today, I've included a copy of the audit. Um, Ally, I don't remember if you've received one yet, but I do have copies at the library. Um, so the audit presentation will be in January as well, which I think will go hand in hand nicely with the conversation about the budget. Um, because uh there are implications uh in our fund balance, for example, and discussions that will make um the conversation about the budget helpful.
That's all great. Great. There are no questions. Dramatic pause. Uh, we'll go to bylaws and policy. Um, trustee Friedman.
Hi, so uh bylaws and policy met last week and uh there are two items on the agenda tonight that we are proposing for the board to review and approve. Those are two sections that are additions or um edits to the personnel policy. So sections four point nine, which is regarding telecommuting, uh which is a revision and then five point one two, which is the paid leave for all workers. Um, and there is a very handy resource that Renee included in the board packet. That is the required change um to be in effect by January first, twenty twenty four for workers who are less than twenty hours a week, um that they can accrue paid time. Um, so we have those two on the agenda tonight. We also discussed um just prioritizing based on the library's needs and what our um sort of long range planning looks like as well. Um, so we did a little shifting around of some of the policies that we'll be bringing to the board in the new year.
Thanks, Ally. Any questions on bylaws and policy? Awesome. Moving right along. Next committee, long range planning committee. So if you're reading the agenda, big spoiler alert. I volunteered to be the chairperson. So I'll give their port. Thank you, Jenny. I appreciate it, that. Party laughs. Um, so you've actually seen a little bit of the output of the long range planning committee. We selected a date for uh board retreat. Um, so hopefully we will have a vast majority of the board able to attend on Saturday, February twenty fourth. It will be someplace local. Um, Renee and I are also working on finding a facilitator for that meeting. Ideally, I would like Renee to be primarily like ninety seven percent participant. You know, there's always a little bit of like housekeeping or whatever that you do when you're the 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 executive director, lead, you know, leader of the organization. So um you know, lots, lots of uh interesting things. We also reviewed the last long range plan, um which I think it was long, yeah, it was a five year, yeah, a five year plan.
Almost three.
Uh, three year plan, traditional word document, et cetera. Renee brought a few examples from other libraries that do more of an infographic of their long range plan or vision, mission, strategy, goal sort of document. So um my, my own recommendation is that we move to something that's a little more digestible or consumable um rather than a fifteen seventeen page word document. So.
And that went along with, I think, some of the conversations we've had as as an organization about our annual work plan. The managers and I have, and you've seen the draft of our annual work plan. We're still using that as a guiding document, at least in the management team. Those are some of the more operational, concrete tasks that would support kind of the larger goals of a would be strategic plan or a long range plan. Um, so they go hand in hand, but the public side of a plan, I think to Bonnie's point, there are benefits of it being digestible and um uh aspirational, but also um measurable and ultimately it provides the organization with a level of accountability to where we're going and how we're going to get there. We did identify a speaker for the board retreat as well. Um, Jamie Rafflin will be providing a presentation on a, actually a variety of topics, um but he will be one of the speakers at the board retreat on the twenty fourth.
So that's the person who presented to the finance committee two months ago in regard to sort of benchmarking the financial position of our library. Treat reserves as a percentage of annual budget um to our library to other peer libraries. Okay, any questions for long range planning or or Ally, anything you'd like to add?
Uh, no additions. I'm very excited about long range planning for the library. That is all.
Excellent. Okay. Moving right along, financials.
Did you, did you want to mention anything about the joint HR minutes? Any meeting?
Um. Sure, yes, that's right. So there was another.
Someplace else on the agenda.
I forget when that happened.
It was after, it was after the last board meeting.
It was like the Thursday after.
Yes, I didn't list it separately since those are separate committee, but I listed them both separately within the ones that met. So whoever is willing, A books would provide an update.
Yeah, Ally, it just, you know, for the record, if you will, and twenty years from now, people think, oh gosh, how did they do this? How did they, you know? Um, they what, do what? Sorry, I'm not being very articulate at the moment, but the HR and finance committee met jointly in order to um determine uh salary action for our library director based on, you know, performance through through the um time period up till November and the joint finance and HR committee um determined and they took salary action um on behalf of uh director Cross uh Grassi, Grassi, Graziano, Jenny, Jenny, there's a lot. Um, but you know, when when we hired Renee is approximately twelve months, so her salary action is effective on her one year anniversary date. So happy early anniversary.
Thank you. I'm very excited. Um, the if salary information that by law um library directors have to have posted publicly will be updated in January, once that goes into.
Yeah, so good, good work by the uh finance HR team. My first time through the cycle, so little bit of learning on my my part as well. Um, but again, for the record, that's how we we decided.
And I should just mention, there was a, there was a quorum between the two uh
Committees.
Committees. We had enough for a quorum to
Yes.
Pass the resolution for.
Salary action. All right. Um, all right. So I believe that closes out the committee reports. Welcome trustees outie. Glad to have you here. And uh financial reports. We'll, we'll move quickly.
Okay, um, so starting with revenues, I'm very pleased to report that we are ninety eight point one five percent received of our property tax revenue.
Some given the interest rates.
That and also um just in terms of how every year libraries tend to receive it. This is pretty early in my experience for a library to hit that ninety eight percent. Um, don't you think, Jenny, is that in your experience? So um, yes, to Bonnie's point, that will only um put us in a stronger financial situation as. as interest rates, um, as you might see down below and interest earnings. And we continue to exceed projected um, revenue, even though we conservatively estimated interest. Um, we continue to see a profit um, or a increase in revenue that would benefit the library. Um, the only other thing I wanted to highlight in revenue is that um, we continue to see um, rev- rental fines. And so again, a reminder, we no longer receive money from fines and the name of this budget line will be updated next year to appropriately name what this is. So this is technically fees. So this is fees for people that have lost an item or damaged an item. So it's an unpredictable revenue line, I have to say. Um, but it, you know, we do have to account for it. So um, it is a small amount of revenue. So I just wanted to mention that. With regards to expenditures, um, we are, we continue to be right on target. Actually, we lagged a little bit in salaries this month. I don't know if you noticed, Bonnie, so um, just in terms of like what we're trying to target. Um, you know, for, you know, monthly spending for salaries. So that's actually good. That puts us in a positive position to have a little bit more wiggle room. Um, with regards to the other employee benefits, I just want to highlight what this line is. This is an um, an annual amount set aside for other employee benefits. And the priority for this line is actually to pay for the cost of flu shots. This year's staff were invited through the village to receive a free flu shot if they wanted it. Um, and we haven't been invoiced for that yet, but Bettina assured me that will be happening. And so when we receive that invoice, this is the line that it will be charged to. Um, so it's not like just some line that we're putting money randomly. It has a use. Um, and I just. Correct, correct. Yes. But at one time, these um, flu shots were free to the library. Um, but it is no longer a benefit or a service that the village provides. Is that, am I reflecting that accurately?
Correct.
Okay. Um. Over the years. Yeah, it's changed. I think what the village has been um, open to covering and so forth. Um. So we are underspent currently in I M R F contributions. Um, that only helps us a little bit going forward. Um, you'll note that there are several lines that are overspent, but that is something that I anticipated in our tracking. Um, our professional contractual budget line covers a variety of things, including our HR source benchmarking project, which the final invoice got paid out of last month's um, uh, budget. So that is reflected here. Um, the work that we've done with our financial advisor is paid for out of here as well. Um, so I just want to highlight why that is. We already knew copier maintenance as we signed on with a new vendor that was going to be overspent. Um, but will be uh, budgeted for next year. And.
I'd like to make a quick comment.
Yes.
Legal services.
Yes, thank you.
So because our bylaws and policy committee is much more active now than last year. And many of these policies get reviewed by legal. Um, plus um, some questions Renee and I have had on P P R T. We are going to spend a little more than last year on legal. Will it be more than the budgeted amount? I don't think so. Can't say for sure, but I just wanted to say that, you know, just from my perspective, um, granted, I wasn't in the president last fiscal year, but we are utilizing them a little more to um, advise us on some topics.
Some matters. And I'll clarify that we are already overspent in legal, one hundred percent.
My apologies.
That's no problem, but I.
I saw fifteen hundred and thought that we would not be overspent. But you're right. Yeah, we're slightly overspent.
We got another invoice right as invoices were due on Wednesday. So um.
Thank you.
Of course. No, happy to clarify. Um, I will uh, end by saying managers and staff are um, reminded, given regular reminders about spending. We've covered um, kind of the, the process for spending and who is, what lines are underspent and what lines are maybe ahead of the curve. And as managers are identifying that spending trend between now and that second part of the fiscal year. Um, they're working on identifying any money if they plan on underspending it and identifying that number to me. Um, so that I can identify potential savings in other areas. Happy to answer any questions on the um, revenue and expenditure reports.
The program supplies, hospitality program supplies and juvenile program supplies, is front end loaded or do you think we'll run it with uh, an oversight?
So hospitality is already um, over uh, one twenty five percent. So um, but I don't anticipate much of any more spending on that. Um, some of the, a, a big chunk of hospitality is our annual staff day. And I was giving my board report, um, and uh, the majority of our annual is spent there. Um. And then with programming, adult programming supplies and juvenile programming supplies, I know that juvenile programming supplies is going to hit that one hundred percent. It might be slightly over. We've already talked about that, Liza and I. But adult might be underspent, just given the fact that we've had to cancel several adult programs throughout the year. Um, so I do think, um, and I mentioned before you got here, Elise has been our um, programming coordinator for the whole library. Given that we have our adult programmer on FMLA leave, so she's the one managing all library programs. So um, she's managing both of those budget lines right now and anticipate there'll be an underspending of that adult. So yeah, of course, happy to answer.
Any other questions on our monthly finance report? Right. So I'd be looking for a motion to approve.
I'm looking to approve.
Thank you, trustee Zaudi. Okay. Thank you, trustee Jardine. Start, Jared, Jared. Uh, voice vote. I'm sorry. Roll call vote.
Okay, trustee Shaw.
I.
Trustee Church.
I.
Trustee Graziana.
Hi.
Trustee Zaudi.
I.
Trustee Jardine.
I.
Trustee Freedom. I.
We're not there yet. All right. Thank you.
Yes, checks.
So um, the only thing I wanted to highlight is the new vendor that you may um, recognize, Complete Cleaning Company. That is our brand new cleaning service, which I have to tell you, I've received many compliments from staff, including um, museum staff about the uh, timely and expedited collection of trash and cleaning services. So um, this is money well spent and I think um, really is a added benefit to the library. The other check that I wanted to talk about is the Engberg Anderson, the forty five hundred. That is the final, um, the second part of the final uh, invoice for the accessibility study, which will be presented to the building and grounds committee tomorrow and then the full board in January. Happy to answer any questions.
Questions on checks. There are no questions. I'm open to a motion.
I'll go to accept checks number.
Fifteen. Oh, yeah, it's in the agenda.
Oh, it is. Okay. Uh.
I try to make it easy for the.
Fifteen eight thirty one through fifteen eight sixty nine.
Okay, thank you, trustee Church. Do I have a second on the motion to approve the check numbers the range just stated?
Also.
Thank you, trustees Audi. Uh, roll call.
Right, trustee Shaw.
I.
Trustee Church.
I.
Trustee Graziana.
Hi.
Trustee Zaudi.
I.
Trustee Jardine.
I.
Trustee Freedom. I.
Sounds like the I's happened. Terrific. That takes us to new business. I've lost my, 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 there it is. All right. So new business item number one. Um, this is to discuss the personal property replacement tax. Um, so.
I have some background and context to share at first.
But I was going to make a statement. I'm trying to remember what it was. Um, so we've been talking about P P R T for a while. And you guys might remember when Renee came back from director's university, she said one of the presenters talked about how um, some municipalities inadvertently overlooked paying out a proportion of P R T to other entities for which they levied, for whom they, they had, were, had levied in the mid nineteen seventies. Um. And I'm happy to say, you know, Renee reached out to the village, Rogers and Drew. We had a meeting. They agree, yes, we should be receiving four percent of the personal property replacement taxes that they get every year in eight installments from Lake County. So. From Lake County. From Lake County. Yes, it goes through Lake County.
Right, right.
Yes. And if you want to primer on it, Renee has provided a copy of this. It's taxes paid by corporations, partnerships, utilities, trusts and S corporations. Um. It, it, that, that exists in, in our geography. So um, I'm just gonna, so we, we've made some progress. Will, we have some more things to talk about um, based on the, the village, the proposal from the village board president and the village administrator. So, but, but we're going to take one step back and then take two or three steps forward on this.
Thank you. Yeah. So um, I would like to provide for the public and for the board, some background and context about P P R T. So as we know, the Lake Public Library's operating budget is almost entirely funded by property taxes. And as of this fiscal year, almost ninety four percent of our budget is supported by those property taxes. So we as a library are reliant on local funds to operate and provide services to the community. But another type of tax is called P P R T, which stands for personal property replacement tax. I first learned about this, as Bonnie said, attending a statewide confident conference at the Capitol um, in August. And so for the benefit of the board and the public, I'd like to prevent, provide this overview and why this is relevant to the library's financial standing. So personal property replacement tax are revenues collected by the state of Illinois and paid to local governments to replace money that was lost by local governments when their powers to impose personal property taxes on corporations, partnerships and other businesses were taken away by the state. These taxes resulted when the new Illinois constitution directed the legislature to abolish personal property taxes. And what was replaced was P P R T. And so in nineteen seventy nine, a law was enacted to provide for statewide taxes to replace those monies lost. Regarding qualification and eligibility, taxing districts such as the Lake Bluff Public Library um, that were created before nineteen seventy seven are eligible and should receive annual P P R T dispersments. What I learned at this conference is the Illinois Public Libraries, like ours, are explicitly stated in the statute as eligible recipients of these funds. So in fact, what I learned in this conference was that um, if your taxing district existed before the state, um, you would be eligible to receive all P P R T dispersments from nineteen seventy seven until present day and going forward. So I can confirm that as per my research, the library, public, the Lake Bluff Public Library does not currently and has not historically received any of its P P R T payments. After conferring with our legal counsel, Ansel and Blink, I confirmed the following information, and I'll read what they quoted. Any municipality which receives an allocation based in whole or in part on personal property taxes, which are levied in pursuant to sections three dash one, three dash four, three dash six, and which was previously required to be paid over to a public library, shall immediately pay over to the library a proportionate share of the personal property tax replacement funds, which such municipality or township receives. The eligibility of local libraries to receive an allocation of P P R T was also confirmed by the Illinois Attorney General in nineteen eighty one in opinion eighty one dash zero one two by Attorney General at the time, Jim Edgar, who opined it is my opinion that a local library is a governmental body within the meaning of section twelve of an act in relation to state revenue sharing with local government entities. What does this mean? A library share of P P R T is received by the village. It's based on the proportion of taxes that were levied in that year, nineteen seventy seven, which upon our research and the, the research that Bettina did at the village was four percent. So in other words, we, the village of Lake Bluff levied for taxes in nineteen seventy seven. Four percent of those taxes were levied for the library.
Yeah, four percent of the P P R T received.
Correct. Well, well, so tech. And yes, um, the percentage of P P R T is based on the percentage of taxes levied in nineteen seventy seven. So that's how P P R T is set going forward. Four percent of the overall P P R T taxes that Lake Bluff gets every year are stat- by statute given to the library or mandated to the library.
I'm just going to quickly clarify, it's what the village receives because the village, village levied for us on behalf of us. Separately, the park district receives P P R T directly from Lake County. Our school district sixty five receives P P R T from Lake County and the village. Yeah. So it's, it's a, a portion of the village by statute is supposed to come to us.
Right. Yes. So perfect um, segue. According to the state statute, the Lake Bluff Public Library should have and should continue to receive four percent of the total amount of P P R T dispersment made to the village of Lake Bluff each and every year going forward. So after attending this conference, I shared information about P P R T to the finance committee. They supported me in initiating communication to Drew back in August and our finance director Bettina, um, which I did on August eighth. The initial response to my inquiry was we will look into it, but I suspect every situation is different. After not receiving response for several months, I followed up via email on October thirtieth, inquiring about my initial question and sharing a statement from our legal team about the background and the process for libraries to receive mispayments. The village administrator at that time responded that he had asked their legal team to review the matter and would reply when he had further information. And he did so on November sixth, when he invited Bonnie and myself for a meeting, which Bonnie referenced earlier. Um, and, and this meeting was to discuss the library's share of P P R T and how best to memorialize these payments.
Sorry, date of that meeting I have as.
No, I know. This was when he said he invited us.
Oh, that's when we were invited and thus this is the date that we actually met.
Yes.
Okay, gotcha. Yes.
So um, we were invited by Drew. The meeting was on November thirtieth. Um, and legal counsel advised us at that time to attend the meeting, the two of us, and listen to the um, information that was shared. Um, and so at this time, I'd like to pass it along to Bonnie, who will talk about the proposal that was presented to us on November thirtieth and the decision that is in front of the board tonight.
Okay, thank you. Um, okay. So that was one step backward or it's kind of just a reminder everything happened. So um, meeting was held by Zoom and um, the village provided a um, analysis which brought to us the four percent number. You know, that was the first time Renee or I had any visibility to the fact that way back in nineteen seventy seven, um, the library represented four percent of the taxes levied. And then um, so Bettina kind of walked us through the numbers. They then said, okay, so year by year, this is the amount of money that the library should have received from twenty twenty three back for a total of five years. And um, Renee and I said, that's exactly what we said and why only five? And uh, the village administrator said that the, their legal counsel said there was a five year statute of limitations. So um, the, the meeting was also, you know, o- opened Renee's initial communications for us. You know, clearly this is an inadvertent omission in how we realize that not all libraries are where they're supposed to be getting this money from P P R T. Um, you know, can you please look into it? We want to make sure that we're getting the appropriate amount of funding we're supposed to get to support and deliver services to our community, right, our shared constituents. Um. I would describe the tone of the meeting as not entirely friendly. Um, and to some extent. And to some extent, you know, we do have some shared. Resources, you know, Bettina helps us out a little bit with. Questions on our budgeting, um, et cetera, so. The village administrator said, well, you know, this is an accommodation. And I would say that our view and legal advice has been, this is a statutory requirement. Um, so we have since further engaged legal advice in regard to statute of limitations. And our interpretation is different between the village and. Uh, our legal counsel here. So the village proposed a five-year. Payment based on the their annual receipts of P P R T times four percent summit. And um, the, that's their proposal for paying out P P R T. The amount of P P R T received by the village is visible in public for the years two thousand eight going forward. That number alone would more than double the five-year amount that they. Said they were required to pay us.
If we extrapolate our four percent that were.
If we extrapolate our four percent, it would more than double it. Um, just, you know, in full transparency, I'm gonna give you estimates, because I didn't memorize the numbers, nor did I bring my computer. Think the total amount over the five years is 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 about twenty two thousand dollars.
Correct.
It it's it it's somewhat substantial to us, considering, you know, when we look to hire a part-time librarian. Is, you know, part-time librarian or library staff member would be covered by that amount of money, but that's a five-year total. Um, the village did also provide us a look at what they expect to receive in twenty twenty four from P P R T and what our four percent would be. So the P P R T amount received by the village has increased substantially over the last three to four years. Probably because things like Target and Hot Valley and other places have developed um. Their business here in in Lake Bluff. Um, so the historical payments, um. You know, it was, it was just over two thousand for many, many of those years between two thousand eight. And two thousand. Eighteen, it's like two thousand eight, yeah. Um, so. That's kind of, tho- those are just the facts, those are the facts. Um, I'd like to open it up for any further discussions or questions.
And before that happens, I have.
Oh, it's even from Bill, yeah.
So, before board discussion begins, I'd like to state that our library board treasurer, Bill Hayes, is unable to make it tonight. To to the meeting, but in preparation for the discussion scheduled, I met with Bill last week about the latest development with P P R T. He knows of the proposal, um, and so we discussed this and I wanted to make sure that um. Even though he is not a voting member tonight, um, his opinions and perspectives are shared with the board. Um, he and the finance committee have been apprised of the status of the P P R T request since I made it in August, so Matt and Bonnie have been kept up to date. Um, after I shared with Bill about the village's proposal. Bill communicated to me his full support of the library board in requesting from the Lake Bluff Village of Board of Trustees the. Full amount of P P R T delinquent dispersments from nineteen seventy seven to present. He also is in support of the library board requesting the funds from these dispersments immediately. As we are within our rights to do so, as stated by our legal team. Bill is also in favor of requesting interest owed on the delinquent dispersments from nineteen seventy seven to present. So I wanted to share that, and Bill has reviewed the statement and has approved me to read it tonight, um, and I pass it back to Bonnie to discuss with board.
Thank you. Again, I'll use that as a segue to open the floor to further discussions, questions. We have a question from trustee Friedman.
A quick question on, just to make sure I have clarification. The proposal is for the five years prior to and including twenty twenty three. Is that correct?
It's for. I think nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, that's what the village came to our meeting. Offering.
And is that including interest?
No.
Okay, and then your research, which is the general figure of more than double is tw- two thousand eight. Through twenty twenty-three, not including interest?
That's correct.
And do you have a number or an estimate based on the information from Bettina about what nineteen seventy seven to present? Plus interest would be?
So good, good question, um, unfortunately, those records are not readily available. They've been requested by Renee from the Department of Revenue.
So we don't have the ballpark of basically total funds owed in comparison to their proposal yet.
So um, I'm not sure if trustee Hayes, um, he he did a quick calculation. On the two thousand eight to two thousand twenty-three.
Um, with interest.
Figures with a moderate interest amount, you know. Three percent per year, I think, is what he, what he said, and that totaled sixty-nine thousand dollars. Again, that's still not the full window of seventy-eight, it's two thousand eight to twenty twenty-three. With, you know, we we would have to agree. Or find intermediary to say this is an appropriate amount of interest to apply over the period of time. So rough estimate, again, you know, just as a number to work with. From two thousand eight to twenty twenty-three with with a three percent interest rate is sixty-nine thousand dollars.
Thank you.
Thanks for the question.
So we have, just observations, we, so we have about thirty-two years undefined P P R T payments plus interest.
Correct.
That is, they think it's a negotiation, but it's still owed to us. And the law, the statute is very clear, we don't have to request this money, they were obligated to give us this money, so I don't understand whether statute of limitations comes in.
In fact, after um, inquiring about the statute of limitations, um, they cited a particular um, section of the law. We shared that reference with our legal team, who did not find that it was applicable to this um, particular situation. Um, explaining that, um, because it would be for public use. Um, as opposed to private use, the statute of limitations would apply if this was for private use, this in no way. As our legal team discussed with us, would apply to private use, everything that it would be used for is public, the library is a public library. So in their opinion, um, this would not, the statute of limitations of five years would not apply.
They have, however, also said, it hasn't been tested in a court of law. Now, I certainly hope that this, that we do not wind up in court trying to get our P P R, our statutory. P P R T payments from the village.
Um, moving forward, it's not gonna be an issue, right, they are gonna start paying.
Yes, they, again, they've acknowledged, the village, the library should be receiving four percent. These are the amounts we've had, we we've received over the last five years, and this is your four percent.
They said their legal counsel advised on an I G A, an intergovernmental agreement to memorialize payments going forward. I don't think, in my recommendation to Bonnie and the board, is that I don't think that is necessary, given that this is. A stat- a statutory requirement, um, just like our property taxes are dispersed and automatically. Um, deposited, and I get those emails eight times a year, um. The the idea would hopefully be that I would have a similar um, update with the P P R T dispersments eight times a year.
I'm just trying to think like what that, so that thirty-two years, I mean, obviously, the, I don't know what this city town looked like, village looked like in nineteen seventy. Yeah, nineteen ninety, but you have to assume there's probably somewhere between five hundred and two thousand dollars. Every year leading up to that, then you have fifty years of compound interest. Which, you know, whole seventy-two just divided by interest rate is gonna double every, if you use a three percent every twenty-something years, so. It's a much bigger number than their.
Yeah, agreed, agreed. Yeah. Any other questions?
No, I'm just, what is, so the rationale is the five-year, is there saying, but why are we looking at two thousand eight?
That's what's available online.
Okay.
No, it's okay.
Again, again, the statute says seventy-eight to present. Unfortunately, a big chunk of those uh, years way back aren't available, so what was available, two thousand eight to two thousand. Twenty-three, twenty twenty-three.
You've got a question, but it's, it will be public record when we.
It already is, yes, it would just be a matter of accessing it.
It's just not online.
So just to clarify, tonight's request is to respond to the five-year proposal?
Yes.
Though though the action item as stated on the agenda is um, vote to request all delinquent payments of. Personal property tax, replacement tax from nineteen ninety-seven to present. Immediately from the village of Lake Bluff, border, village of Lake Bluff Board of Trustees. Um, Bill stated in his statement that we should be collecting interest as well. I'll tell you, I I support Bill's recommendation. That we get the entire window seventy-eight to current and interest immediately.
That's actually how I found out at the Director's University during the finance and budgeting presentation. Um, Alex Todd, who's actually the director at the Prospect Heights Library. Um, talked about how a director attended Director's University, learned about P P R T. Went back to their village, realized they weren't collecting and. And started collecting it, and they earned from that training and from that interaction over six figures from that um, one interaction.
So.
So the the village did.
They leveled the wooden entrance too, for all the back. Um, so I asked Alex if he could remember what library that was, and he could not. And he sent out an email to his colleagues at Director's University, couldn't remember, because the Director's University has been around for these five years now. Um, so you're absolutely, I mean, I was trying to find out who this library was, to ask what precedents, all of that, um. But I'm not sure about the interest, um, but I do know that um, our legal counsel has advised us that. Um, we would be within our right to um, ask for interest.
Well, that could be our, if we want to make this a negotiation, that could be, because the the interest isn't explicitly stated, right, so that could be part of our give and take.
Well, I will say this. We get our resident, I'll call it residential property tax. You know, from those of us, all of us who live here, right, we pay our property tax, the library eventually gets some of that. Um, we get that immediately. And we earn, we're earning a good amount of interest on it right now.
Yeah. Nineteen eighty, rates were approaching twenty percent.
Yes, right. And which was taking him, probably not that high at that time, because the property value was a lot less.
Right, right, and and again, the 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 P P R T times four percent really does kind of flatten out. In those two thousand eight to, I'll say roughly. Twenty sixteen at about two thousand two hundred, so I feel like that's, you know, that's quick mental math there about what the backend probably looks like. It's probably about right. I think it's about right, so, you know. We've taken a look at the financial position of the library. Compared to other libraries, we've just shortened ours because of financial issues and visit count. I can't in clear conscience. Ask for anything else. Besides the whole thing and the interest, because you know what, if we get it. You know, I I the. We we can invest that to improve the window of service that we provide and the quality of the service that we provide, you know, at some point. Um, I can't, I I can't support asking anything less.
And I'll just share, my recommendation to the board would be to support um, requesting all payments as well with interest. Um, I think it is an aspect of the board's fiduciary responsibility to um, collect all revenue that is owed to the library. Um, so it only to me makes sense that, and so that would be my recommendation to the board.
And I I say request and ask, those are soft words, I don't know that there, it's necessarily a request.
Man.
Correct.
Yes.
I would say that, given our financial situation now, um. I agree with you that that's the only thing we have to go forward with, but that is, that is something that, besides the fact that we're being videotaped here and. That will not be looked at, in the public record, but that that is really not part of the argument that we need to bring to. The village, village by statute owes us this money, we have not been paying since nineteen seventy seven. That's not too far off fifty years. And that's pretty unaccountable.
I again, I don't think it's anyone's. I don't think there's any malice.
I would hope not.
I hope, I would hope not too, um. The, you know, I I'll go back to, I think, the reason why property taxes provided immediately. Residential property taxes, so that we can earn interest on it. The same thing is in the statute regarding P P R T, the amounts are due immediately. That's why I feel we should. Be paid interest.
And we won't know what those numbers are, even the four percent, we want to know what that is. Goes all the way back to nineteen seventy seven.
No, we do, until we get those records. We won't know the full amount until we get the records correct.
We won't know the dollar amount, we know the four percent, because that was set in nineteen seventy-six.
Oh, it was.
Based on the levy, so whatever percentage the library levied in comparison to the larger village. That percentage is what sets the amount of P P R T dispersment to the library each year, so the four percent doesn't change. Across that almost fifty-year span.
So how is the interest determined? Sorry, say that.
How is the interest determined?
Patty don't know.
I don't know, what would, do you have any idea what the IRS would charge us if we didn't pay our taxes sometime?
I mean, I think we're being charitable if we use a, a three or four percent historical, I mean, that, freezer, until recently. Still very low, so I think we're.
I mean, we could refer that to the finance committee for further research.
We'll see.
So, oh, sorry, one more comment, and I, to um. Echo Janie's statement, I think, um, one, it's sort of regardless of the library's current financial situation. You know, that this request or this is being, I again, I don't know if request is the right word. But regardless of the financial situation of the library, if it is, you know, within a statute, it is not about. Uh, context in that situation, um, so I also feel strongly about having. Um, that paid in full, and I'm eager to learn more about the full length of time from nineteen seventy seven until present. Because I do think even with the back of the envelope estimates, um. This is not something we can leave on the table, more considering a service being provided to the community and paid for by the community, so just want to state that. For public record, I suppose.
Thanks, Alan, um, so would anyone like to make a motion? What what the motion would do is then, um, we would write a letter to the village board. And the village administrator and finance director, um, making them aware of. The fact that we've considered their proposal, and we have decided that X regarding their proposal. And, yeah.
That we have decided to make a counter proposal, do you want to put it that way?
I wouldn't call it a counter proposal.
I'd just call it, call it.
Yes, that's a good way to put it.
So if if someone could try to cobble together a motion, like what what do, what are we gonna say? Um I I. What I'm hearing is, yeah, um, thank you, bye. I think that's a song. Uh on the on the five year. We can, we can make a couple motions if you want to break it up and say, you know. A motion regarding the offer, I'll call it the offer to decline it.
So this would be a motion to decline the proposal from the lake, the village of Lake Bluff. Regarding a five-year P P R T payment.
Correct, five-year no-interest P P R T. Payment.
I respond to the proposal with. A, again, request might be the wrong word. But request for payment for the entirety of the payments from nineteen seventy seven to present day, including interest.
Got it. So trustee Friedman has just made a motion.
I don't know if that was a motion. Ally, was that a motion or are you just?
That would be the motion. Yes, it is a, hey, responding to the proposal with a no and. Responding with. A request for all delinquent payments, including interest from nineteen seventy seven to present.
And is that, that is your motion?
I just want to clarify that that summarizes what we've just discussed in a very clear way before I make it a motion.
Sandy, that, no, that's, no, 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 that's, no, I knew that was an emotion.
She was just clarifying what what it should say. Okay.
Before I make, I'm happy to make a motion. I just want to make sure that that is representative of what we've discussed.
I believe so. Immediately with interest for the entire nineteen seventy eight through twenty twenty three.
How can we, how can we put the words to be made whole? In that somehow, because I I really think that that, what you said, Matt, is germane to the issue.
Um a suggestion might be in the agenda. I have vote to request all delinquent payments. And you can add the phrase and be made whole of personal property replacement tax dispersments from nineteen seventy seven. If you want to add that to that.
Yeah, and to present is probably better because not all payments have been made for the twenty twenty three.
No payments.
Yeah, or to the village, not all payments for twenty twenty three have yet been made to the village. Where was interesting included in that statement?
The board gets to decide if it is or not.
Yeah, I uh it is. Everybody, um is everybody happy with this wording? That we request all the delinquent payments? I think we saying de- delinquent payments is the same thing as. A personal property tax replace, a personal property placement tax from nineteen seventy seven. To the present immediately from the village lake board trustees, but we need to put in some interest. With interest. Okay, so after tax, what phrase with? Interest. From nineteen seventy seven to present immediately from the village. Okay, I think.
Interest. I'm just suggesting clarifying what type of interest. Compounded interest in our caps.
Interest compounded.
We're just with compounded interest from nineteen seventy seven to present.
Because otherwise they could understand or interpret that as just a flat amount. I'm just trying to make sure I understand what the motion is.
I can say this once again, if if um. Our our, we will um move to request all delinquent payments of personal property replacement tax. With compounded interest from nineteen seventy seven to present immediately from the village of Lake Bluff Board of Trustees.
Okay, thank you, trustee.
I was just clarifying, so I'll I'll make that motion, but I I want to make sure that. We, do we need to say anything about how we're researching with that number? I I guess that.
That can be discussed under the discussion of the motion. So there's a motion on the table. The next step would be a second and then add more discussion for a motion.
So, so if there's a second to that motion, we can discuss the specifics of that motion. Okay, that's what Renee is saying.
Okay, so I move. That the Board of Trustees of Lake Bluff Library. Request all delinquent payments of personal property replacement tax with compounded interest. From nineteen seventy seven to the present immediately from the village of Lake Bluff Board of Trustees.
So moved second by trustee Zaudi um and further questions and discussion around that motion. So. You wanted to clarify something?
I just wanted to uh clarify that. The, the actual. Records are being requested.
Okay. Yes, so our attorneys originally advised that it's up to the village to get that information. They've not, they they, Bettina has said that they have requested it, but haven't received it yet. Additionally, Director Grassi has requested the information from the Illinois Department of Revenue. So that information hopefully will come to both requesting parties. So we have uh the motion from trustee Church, the second from trustee Zaudi. Any further questions or discussions?
So on the motion, you will send a letter. To the village.
If this motion passes, the next step is to draft a letter. Bonnie and I will work together on that. It will be sent to our attorneys for review. Um and it would be um shared with, um we could talk about that.
The the village president, as the administrator, the finance director, as all were present in the meeting where they offered us. Five years of payments, no interest. As well as the entire board because of the um, it's it's. It's a governance issue. It's um, you know, there's a statute involved and um. Hopefully, you know, it won't devolve into lawyers and lawsuits. Um but it's something that we feel should be presented to the entire village for their review. Entire village board, entire village. Okay, so we have that motion on the table. Um I meant to ask you this before. Voice vote, roll call?
This is definitely roll call.
All right. We ready to move to roll call. I just want to make sure there aren't any other questions, asterisks.
Do you, do we want to refer this to the Finance Committee to do some research?
Do some research on on the interest piece of it?
Sure. That could be a separate, yeah, for sure.
I I kind of already mentally noted that. I don't know if we need a motion to do that. Do we need a motion to do that?
No.
Yeah, so we'll meet on Thursday. All right, so um trustee Friedman, if you would do a roll call vote, please.
Yes, uh trustee Shaw.
Hi.
Trustee Church.
Definitely I.
Trustee Graziano.
Hi.
Trustees Audi.
Hi.
Trustee Jardine.
Hi.
Trustee Friedman, I.
The motion unanimously passes. Thank you.
Bonnie and I have a chance of meeting scheduled for ten fifteen tomorrow morning to work on this letter. Um and we will finalize that meeting now. Um and we will, the goal is to have that letter shared by tomorrow. Our attorneys are aware of this letter being sent to them for the review, so they have been put on notice to review it immediately. Um. And I believe the letter will be shared by um President Shaw to um President Shaw. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, um that takes us to ten B. Uh approvals for some updates to our personnel policy. Thank you again to the Bylaws and Policy Committee for um the heavy lift on creating and or amending these policies. Do you want Ally as a chair to talk about this or would you?
I was going to defer to Ally in that. Um I do have a director's um. A memo with context for the telecommuting pop section first. Um and then I, you know, whatever additional information that you'd like me to provide, Ally, but I think. I more than trust your overview and summary of it as well.
Okay, thank you. Um so there are the two updated sections for review tonight. As Renee discussed, the first is telecommuting, which is a revision to an existing part of the personnel policy. Um and there is some comprehensive context here from Renee, which is very helpful. Um we reviewed this two different times and essentially, Renee, please correct me if I'm wrong. There has not been very strong guidelines around telecommuting and obviously COVID made of. Everybody telecommute, um so a major shift in. How frequently that was happening, how um how it was happening and there was a need for some guidance. For staff to be able to understand what the policy and guidelines were. Um so we have here an expanded telecommuting section to be added to the personnel policy. Um this also includes, which is not in here because it's more procedural, but includes a request form that Renee will use. With any staff who are requesting telecommuting. Um be built into their schedule. Um so she has an opportunity to review the request. And then communicate whether it is approved or denied. And uh that was helpful for us just in understanding context and I think also will be helpful for staff so that there is some clarity on the process. Um so we are asking the board to approve this telecommuting section. Uh before I go on to the next revision proposal or addition. Um are there any questions about telecommuting or Renee, is there anything you'd like to elaborate on?
Yeah, so two things. Um our legal team has already reviewed the telecommuting section prior to tonight's board. Um meeting, so their recommendations and additions have been incorporated um into this update. Um and just to reiterate, we have had some element of work from home. In our personnel, in our board-approved personnel policy since two thousand nine. And thank you to Martha for her historical context in this preparation. Um and so this really to me is just um writing the ship in our policy. To make sure that we have an update policy to support practice. Um and uh and I would recommend separate conversations, given that they are separate policies. And um as separate actions too, but that's just my recommendation.
Um I don't have any, I don't really have a question about the telecommuting itself, but I was just curious to know like how many of your employees can teleport.
Yes, so um all of our full-timers have options to telecommute. And um I explained to the policy committee that um there is a specific percentage. Um that I manage to make sure they are in the library and for our full-timers, it's the vast majority of their hours are in the library. Um and so our, including myself, um six full-timers eligible for telecommuting. And then we have um an additional three, let's see, um so six plus uh. Um our accounting bookkeeper, we have a part-time librarian that manages collection development. And then our cataloging librarian. Um and those are the staff, if I'm not mistaken. Thank you for the head nod to verify I'm correct. Um those are the staff that have regular telecommuting hours. Um so it's really based on the work and if the work can be done. So for example, there are some positions, library associate, all of their hours are desk hours. So that's what the form would allow me to do as director, evaluate the request, approve the request, evaluate their job description. Assess if uh this is appropriate, evaluate how many hours this is for being requested for. Um so if that helps, so it's a total.
To make it more procedural, so that you have a form that people.
Correct, correct, yes.
And and. Clearly staffing the building is priority, right? People who are here, like your job is to be in the building, public facing, on the front line, if you will, right? Um so these are, as I hear it. See, you know, the roles that Renee has outlined that are eligible for telecommuting, they're ones that are doing kind of, they're not serving the. Public directly for those hours that they're. And they have some portion of their work, but it's not that.
And in uh my director memo, I I included examples of approved telecommuting arrangements prior to. Um this proposal or this ad um to support accommodations for those eligible under ADA. To support employees, certain doctor's appointments, illness or recovery. Um COVID is a great example. There are some that are, you know, that opt to wait until they receive um a negative test. Um before returning to work and that is supported. Um you know, my example is uh, you know. On-site contractors to be able to work from home while I schedule a contractor. Um the nature of my work, I don't have as much desk time anymore. Um so this just allows me to be able to work from home. And then I provided a summary of the um the process of how uh remote work was used during the pandemic here at this library. Um for additional contacts. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so for telecommuting policy, no other questions, open to a motion? Anyone like to move to approve the?
All motions are approved, the amended revised telecommunication, four point nine telecommunication, telecommuting. Policy for eligible library boards.
Thank you, trustee Zaudi. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Sandy?
Yeah.
Thank you. Second from Sandy. All those in favor, aye, aye? All those opposed, nay? Sting? Hey, policy is approved.
Thank you very much. And so now that the policy has been approved, all staff will receive a copy of the policy. Those that have regular telecommuting hours, all employees of those telecommuting will be given a copy of the form. So that way we have the form on file for all staff. Um so I will review everybody's uh arrangement as if it were a brand new request and we'll just start everybody off. Um new and then that form uh when approved or denied will live in the um in their personnel files, which are uh living in my office. Thank you very much.
All right, that takes us to our next new, new, new policy, really. Um so based on a new law passed in March of this year that goes into effect in January. We have in front of us a new personnel policy called Cade Leave for All Workers. That's a. The Act, it's called Cade Leave for All Workers Act. So this is a statutory requirement for the library. Um one thing I'll note is the village already has a policy in place that is more generous than this one. So they actually voted last night. To not put anything new in place because there's a little different. Um that said, I'll turn it over to Ally or Renee for a quick overview or Matt, sorry.
Ally, over to you.
Okay, um so this, as Renee said, or as um Bonnie said, this is uh. Bringing us into compliance in advance of January first, twenty twenty four. Uh essentially, this allows for employees who work less than twenty hours. Or twenty hours or less per week to accrue leave. Starting the first day of their employment, they can get one hour for every forty hours worked. They can start using that paid leave ninety days after they begin working. Um and they are allowed to use this for any reason. Um similar to like pre-requested leave, um they could submit a leave request a week in advance. Um or as soon as they know they need to take it. Uh currently, employees at the library do not have paid leave at this level. Um so this is an important addition and. Yeah, I think that's everything for me. Renee, did I miss anything?
No, not at all. I have some additional information to share with the board. Um so this new policy will give. So this new policy will give PLA WA leave for nine part-time employees who currently don't have any explicit leave. The remaining 12 staff are not eligible for PLA WA leave as they already received paid leave through the library. So if these nine part-time employees work the full 18 hours per week steadily all year, according to this accrual rate, they will accrue 17 PLA WA leave hours within 52 weeks or one year. So Bonnie and I were discussing to try and identify some targets for budgets. So the total estimate cost based on those nine part-time staff and their salary rates projected for May 1st, 2024, the total estimate cost of this additional leave to the library would be approximately $3,100, $3,100. And so this would be paid out of the library salary costs and budgeted annually going forward. So of course, there is some variability in calculating this number based on how many hours employees actually work. And not everyone is budgeted 18 hours to work, but I extrapolated that based on just kind of an overestimate. And also will depend on how quickly they use their time. So I will use this first year to track accruals and usage and use that information to budget accordingly going forward.
Great, thanks Renee.
Sure.
So open to a motion to, open to a motion on this policy.
Motion to approve the newly enacted statutory compliant 5.12 Paid Leaves for All Workers Act.
Thank you, trustee Zaudi, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Trustee Church on the second, thank you. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Stain? The policy is approved, we are rolling.
Thank you very much. We have a staff meeting on Friday during which I will be happy to share this with all staff. And updates will be made and sent out to employees for communication.
We are on. I'm sorry, is there a question?
Someone tell me who was the second, I couldn't quite hear.
Jenny.
Thank you.
Yeah, you bet. Okay, we are on to the intergovernmental agreement between the library and Forest Bluff School. This is a renewal of an existing agreement. I don't think there are any changes, but Director Rossi, that assume.
No, there are no changes. This is to, you all have already approved two IGA renewals this year with District 115 and District 65. Forest Bluff prefers to have their renewal around this time of year in the late fall. And so we have done that. And so if it is passed tonight, the updated contract will be sent to Forest Bluff for finalization.
So, and for those of us new, those who are new to the board, the purpose of this agreement is?
To clarify the responsibilities of the library and the school district with regards to the, the school library card program. So it is an intergovernmental agreement that stipulates between the two parties what the library is responsible for in providing services through the student card program and what the school district is responsible for. There is a small invoice for Forest Bluff. That number is in, it's the same as previous years. We haven't made any adjustments this year, but we will evaluate all the numbers for all the IGAs next year. And that number is based on the estimated number of students at that school that are eligible for a Lake Bluff library card. So essentially, how many Lake Bluff residents or people within our jurisdiction go to that school? And it covers library services for them.
And is it $50 a student or?
It's for the institution, so it's $50. So I know we had talked about at the finance committee evaluating the amount that District 115, District 65, and Forest Bluff pay. And so I do know that this amount is based on, for Forest Bluff especially, how many students this will cover. And Katie, who is not here tonight, Katie Horner, our circulation and reference manager, has assured me that this is a small number of students that this covers. I believe Martha is gesturing three to me, the number three.
It is, it's non-Lake Bluff resident children who attend Forest Bluff.
Sorry, I, I think I said the opposite, which I didn't mean to, thank you for correcting. So yes, but the other side of this is, we don't know the last time these contracts have been reviewed by an attorney. We don't know the last time, and we are building that into the budget for next year to have these contracts renewed at the renewal for the next school years. And at that time, I think there's going to be some conversation, well, no, there will be conversation by, with myself and Katie to reassess the amounts for all three. Thank you for that correction.
Sure. Okay, any further questions on the IGA with Forest Bluff School? Hearing none, I'm open to a motion.
I will move that we approve the 2023-2024 intergovernmental agreement with Forest Bluff School.
Thank you, trustee Church, is there a second? Trustee Zaudi on the second, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Stain?
Thank you.
So thank you to President Shaw, who will sign this agreement. And Ally, since you are not present, what I might do is have the vice president, who is here in person, sign to attest, if that is appropriate. She's giving me a thumbs up, thanks Ally.
All right, while that document gets moved over to trustee Church, our next discussion is just, it's really an FYI. There's no action necessary. Our friends at the Lake Bluff History Museum, the cap, that's a lowercase f, not a capital F. That's if you're confused with friends, friends, you know. Lake Bluff History Museum has issued a letter, which is in your packet. So it's page number 14 here in the top corner. They are exercising a 10-year renewal on their lease of the 127th East Scranton Avenue. And the, the original lease and IGA between the village, the library, and the history museum allows for a number of renewals of 10 years. It allows for three of them. So President of the Lake Bluff History Museum Kathleen has said this earlier in November.
And to reference the point in the IGA specifically, that talks about the three options to renew in 10-year increments. If you go to section 15, page four, at the top of the page where it says, letter B is envoy term, you'll see it says, the term of the VA center lease shall be 25 years with three options to renew in 10-year increments. So just citing the part of the IGA that the letter is referred to. Happy to answer any questions, if there are any.
Again, this is just an FYI, no action necessary.
So they, just for my understanding, so they have a 25-year lease, or they have, right? And then they have 30 more years, pretend they're, based on this, for $10 a year. Make sure I wasn't missing that.
You are correct. So I will communicate to Director Kathy O'Hara that this has been shared with the library board to say that we have officially acknowledged this. And this is, was included in discussion at the board meeting.
All right. We are finished with, and I've lost my place, give me a minute. Nope, that's not it. We are finished with new business that takes us to, I'm gonna, I'm gonna.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Library correspondence, feel like we should have a typewriter noise.
So as always, I include library correspondence. And given the board's unanimous vote last month about the library hours pilot, what I talked to Bonnie about is all the various ways that I am planning with staff to provide information to the board about evaluating this pilot. And we haven't launched the hour change yet, but communication went out in our winter newsletter. At the same time, we shared that information with you all via email, some talking points. And then our communication went live online around the same time as the newsletter went to homes. So since then, I have received a variety of email and messages that I wanted to highlight for the board. And so I will do this monthly so that we have a representation of all of the people that have shared and taken the time to give their feedback directly with the library. To reiterate something that Emily shared earlier during public comment, at the time that I was required to finish the board packet for OMA guidelines, I hadn't yet had her approval to include her statement. But she did give it to us today, and so that's the only reason why it says anonymous. So I didn't have her approval at the time. So I'd be happy to share or answer any questions, but I think just an overall kind of observation or, you know, kind of a, a lesson I've learned in my years of managing communication for libraries is that they're usually with, it's important to expect waves of feedback. So obviously, the big change, you know, the big initial change communication that's going to elicit or solicit feedback from people that are, you know, perhaps more emotionally charged about the change. And staff have been prepared in a variety of ways to address conversation and feedback with talking points that they have copies at the desk. We have information on the website that staff can always refer to. Staff know they can always bring in manager to have a conversation. And they always know that they can defer, and I recommend that they share this information with me. I'm checking in with staff on a regular basis to say, you know, how have you been hearing people talk about the hours? And I will continue to do that. This particular write-up in the first, the first correspondence that I'm sharing with you is a compilation of a variety, mostly of community partners, but some residents as well. What I've appreciated about, what I appreciate all public comment. And I reiterated this in the do's and don'ts that I sent out today via email. You know, the library is a place for dialogue. Of course, the public library is a place for information. And of all places, we should encourage people to participate and engage in the library. One of the ways we do that is by encouraging feedback or attending a board meeting, as I invited Emily to do that today. One thing that I wanted to highlight is a response I got from Laura Ramirez. She's the new director of the Highwood Library. And I know Highwood has come up a couple of times as we've compared our financial standing, a couple of times with Highwood. And she said, as a director of another small library, I want to compliment you on taking this step. I truly believe that you are taking necessary steps to keep your library sustainable long-term. I'm going to counter that with the conversation I had with Emily just today before the board meeting. And so it's really important that I'm honest with the board about all the levels of feedback. And so it was characterized, this decision was characterized by Emily as a horrible decision that this should be the last option that the library should have identified. And, you know, I think it's an example of that, you know, public libraries are important places in their community. People care about the decisions that you all as boardmakers make or board members make. And people are invested, and Emily is an example of someone that I feel is incredibly invested in the library and really a true partner in what we're trying to do. Even though she may decide, she may disagree with the decision. I think we all, she and I agree on the same things. We want to expand access. We want to make sure that staff are healthy and supported. And I hope I get another opportunity to share with her the various ways we've made decisions before the hours change that truly this was the last option that I presented to the board after canceling programs, after a burden on staff, after adding new staff, after adjusting workloads and responsibilities. So I really appreciate the continued support of the board and happy to answer any questions about this first piece of correspondence.
I'm just curious about the procedure. As you're gathering staff feedback, then when do you, like, so then how do we use that feedback? Or how do you use that feedback at the end of the six-month pilot period or for throughout that? And how do, how do community members that come to attend or we, or that send a letter? How, how are you forwarding with them and how would we, as board members, say, encourage to make sure that the dialogue will?
So a couple, a couple thoughts on that. I think that as we, then our border treat is one opportunity for us to look at cumulative feedback up until that point. Another thing is the pilot itself, a six-month. So it would make sense to do a deep dive on, with three months of data, just to take a look. Renee and I were talking about this the other day, and she said, you know, library utilization varies a lot between winter, spring, summer, very high, fall. So it reinforced to me the importance that we have more than just the winter. But I think we should take a look after three months to see how, how's it going, how, you know? And then the other thing we would have is the run, the runout of 2023 calendar year and the new visit data that we have from the middle of October to December.
When we install.
Correct, in the middle of October is when we install that new counter. So I think we, I think we should take a look at that in our, in our, I guess, to look at the folds, January, February, March, we would do that in April.
And I could, and I actually, I'm already planning on presenting kind of a, almost a communication plan, but it's really an evaluation plan to the board during one of my director reports to explain all the other ways that I would recommend that we solicit feedback to the community. I see an opportunity for us to do like a very easy, one-question survey and have that through social media and encourage that and send that out through our social, our social connections. We have the spring newsletter during this time period. And so that's another opportunity for us to communicate what we've learned. I mean, we have to have the spring newsletter content done maybe February. So we'll have maybe a little bit, but I'm going to also include information in the spring newsletter to say, thank you for your patience, we are still gathering data. You know, I have my director form. So all of my, the communication that goes through this form online through the library website gets sent to me via email, and I respond to each and every question. And just like, you know, you did Jenny in doing a warm introduction to me via email with Emily, I highly encourage all of you to do the same. You know, you have some talking points and you all have the, kind of some examples of how to maybe make a graceful exit. Jenny and I kind of talked about that, you know, even if the feedback is given to you that may be counterpoint to the board decision, all feedback is valid and we should make space for all of it. And so during that time, when I present kind of a plan for analysis, it'll include the, the door count data, it'll include the number of programs. It's also going to include an analysis of work capacity for staff. Because the other side of this is not, you know, the other side of this is, we're making this change to increase capacity to do more and things that have been on delay for so long. And I will be providing those updates as part of my overall analysis. So I think there'll be a combination of both quantitative and qualitative data that I hope will provide a really wide expanse on the overall pilot and inform a decision by the board.
I think underscoring the things that are put on hold or.
Yep.
Succeed, will want to be a little painting to the general public. These are the projects that we had in place or the programs we had to cut.
Yeah.
But now.
I agree, I've been doing that in my board, my director reports monthly to say even a list of all the projects that have had to be on hold. So I agree with you, Matt, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, that, no, that's quite right. I am, you know, and there's other pressures too, right? Like the, the cost of services does go up. The minimum wage does go up. The statutory requirements for us to pay leave will change, right? So there's, there's other pressures.
Basically.
Presses in the, in the, at the library right now.
The monthly analysis of the amount of leave taken by staff, I know those were monthly accruals that you saw in previous months when we were really in the thick of the staffing crisis. Those are reports I'd be glad and I'm going to share with the board again. Because throughout this, and especially now that the PLA WA leave has been approved, that means all staff, even after, well, it'll be after 90 days. But after 90 days, all staff will have an element of leave that they will be mandated and allowed to take. And so how can we balance the needs of the organization while also supporting that? And, you know, something like FMLA is sometimes planned. I do know that we have, we are expecting a maternity leave this summer. And it's a youth services staff member, and that will affect, it is already affecting planning for youth services because they have the ability to plan ahead, but those are things that we have to consider.
Yeah.
And I'm always open for other data points and suggestions for what to bring to the board to help make a comprehensive decision.
And just to underscore Renee's, one piece of what Renee said. She and the management team are creating a staffing plan for the building so that we know here's our capacity and here's what we need in terms of the hours of the task. Here's the, you know, hours dedicated to HR and one-on-one, team meetings, staff insert, whatever. You know, so, so we'll know, okay, if, and if we it'll, it'll just give us greater granularity to impacts of sunsetting positions at the library, which has happened recently. And capacity to deliver programs, because when you do things like a storytime at the farmer's market, those people aren't in the building to staff the building. We're delivering that service outside of our four walls, if you will, and trivia night, same thing. People get paid to facilitate trivia night. That's not something that happens in our buildings. We have to account for those things as well in the staffing. That'd be great. So.
Oh, thank you.
I just wanted to quickly sort of like highlight what all of you have said tonight, which is one, I think all of this is really important data. And we know that there will likely be another influx of data coming in in January as the hours roll out and want to emphasize what I think is the importance of sticking with the six-month pilot. Obviously, there are different opinions on this decision, but again, all of it is information and data. And I'm very grateful to the residents who've provided that information for us and through their feedback. Because if we were to not get that, it's less information for us to have. It was just crickets when we announced something like that. We would have to make assumptions. And so I greatly appreciate the public's willingness to provide that feedback, Emily's presence tonight as well as her letter. But also want to underscore that committing to that six-month period will be critically important to making a, a decision long-term.
And Ally, I just, I just remembered a small piece of information that I gathered. You know, Renee shared this comment from the director at the Highwood Public Library, and I went along and I looked at their hours. Breaks. That's the library whose financial position looks most closely to us. I believe it's twelve to six, six days a week, closed on Sundays. So that would be six times six, thirty-six hours. They operate thirty-six hours.
That was very eye-opening, and I, I believe Katie may be the one who presented it, Katie or Eliza at last month's meeting, but Renee, as you were talking about, you know, different ways to inform the public about how this decision was made. That was very impactful to see that operating size versus operating hours breakdown. And I think that could be a data point that would help clarify for residents to, to provide a benchmark, because we obviously don't know if we aren't in those communities. And that was very valuable to see. So maybe considering that when we go back to the community with an update.
Thank you, Ally, for that suggestion. We'll have that through our communication.
Okay, so that's all the email comments. So Ally, if you'll just record that Trustee Zaudi had to, he's, he's got, I know he's got a commitment Tuesday evenings shortly after nine o'clock. So he's stepping out.
Close Monday through Thursday now.
It's Monday through Thursday now. Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's right.
Glad you, glad we were able to make.
Really appreciate it. Okay, so the second correspondence is a letter that I received handwritten. It was dropped off at the library. The resident is a regular user of the library, current card, library card holder. And so I wanted to, and I, I'll first say that as soon as I received this, I drafted a letter in response. I told Bonnie about this and wanted just to provide a platform for this feedback to be shared broadly with all of the trustees, but also to transparently communicate to the public that this feedback was shared with the library. So a letter has already been mailed and sent to this individual as of the day after I received this. Thanking the individual for their feedback, inviting a follow-up phone conversation with them if they would like to. And so, yes, I just wanted to put this on everyone's radar.
Did this person include his funding?
Yes, but I did not include it in the board.
No, I'm gonna stand there.
Yes.
So again, the early cycle of feedback regarding the announcement. I just want to compliment this team as well. I think you guys have done a great job broadly communicating across multiple channels or media about the change. Nice job.
Thank you. And I'd love to end with sharing feedback from a young participant, a member of our library, who, in their opinion, says we are doing a perfect job, every one of us. And we do have comment cards in the youth department, and we encourage feedback to be shared by our youngest members as well as our older members. So I wanted to thank the staff for their continued fantastic work across the board and across the organization.
Okay, great. So that completes the correspondence section of our agenda. Now open to any and all other business. Hearing none. Oh, we do have something. Oh, yeah. So there is an item. Thank you, because I lost.
Yeah, no, of course. Go for it.
So just a reminder, if you'll note in your calendars, and Renee, maybe you can send an invite for the staff luncheon on January fifth of two thousand and twenty-three. Yeah, and if you wouldn't mind sending it.
Twenty-three.
Twenty-twenty-four, yes, typo.
Sorry, thank you. I'm not ready.
I was reading and not thinking perhaps. And, and if you wouldn't mind, starting it at twelve, there are a number of people who said, yes, I can come about at twelve. Various things, setup, grocery run, catering, pickup. Official start is twelve-thirty, so it was decent to get everything together.
Thank you very much. I do have an update to email to the HR committee. The restaurant of staff's choosing is Tacos El Norte. So I have a selected menu. Staff are already very excited as it's been communicated to them. So I just want to say thank you on behalf of the staff for this great recognition.
Is there a need for executive session this evening? Hearing none. Would anyone want to motion to conclude our meeting?
So.
Okay, Trustee Church moves to close at nine oh three. Is there a second? Trustee Graziano, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? We are done. December meeting done. Happy holidays, everyone.
Thank you very much, everybody.
See you next year.